Good morning, everybody. So what we're going to do this morning, I had lots of pieces of paper, so I'm going to do quite a bit of talking. The first I'm going to take care of, I'm going to present for a while. And then, once I've done that, we'll have a discussion about the Sutra and everything that I'm talking about, up to that. The broad structure. The Five Sermons is actually quite short. I'm going to start by reading the Five Sermons, so we'll get it in our ears. But it's actually quite short. But what it takes us to is really deep. To understand it, to bring out the understanding, I'm going to go back in time and talk a little bit about the trajectory of Buddha's life that gets us there. Just a little bit about the beginning, and then I'll talk about the first two sermons, leading up to this one, which is the third sermon. And then, there are a handful of other sutras that I'm going to quote from, just to bring particular points out. And then finish up us in, so what does that mean? What do we do with that? How do we bring that into our life? How does this actually help us become happy? It's actually really what this practice is about. It's about me being happy and wanting every being to be happy, this one and all the others. How does this actually help us to do that? So that's where I'm going to finish up, and then as a single of the conversation. And then, depending on how we're doing on time, and if you have lots of questions and comments, we'll go long, and if you don't, we'll finish short. I would like to finish with a period of matter, so we'll sit together and have a period of matter. I may stop another period of sitting in this somewhere if I feel like, but we'll see how that goes. And I miscounted, I thought that we're going to be five people in the room today, so I printed off five handouts. There are six people in the room today, so you don't have one, I'm afraid. But that's okay, because nobody actually needs one. So if anybody wants to just give it to me, or if you're okay not having one, or you want, you'll want to share, but you really don't need it. And is there just some, people like to have something to hold on to, so sometimes that's helpful. All right, with all of that, let's get started. I'm going to start, as I said, by reading. So... The Five Sermon, Aditya Paramaya Sutta, which is a flame, Five Sermon. And this is the third sutra, the third sermon, the third recorded teaching of the Buddha. "I have heard that on that one occasion, the Blessed One was staying at Gayar, at Gayar Head with one thousand monks. There he addressed the monks. Monks, the all is a flame. Which all is a flame? The eye is a flame, forms are a flame, eye consciousness is a flame, eye contact is a flame. And whatever there is that arises, independence on eye contact, experiences pleasure, pain, as neither pleasure nor pain, that too is a flame, a flame with what? A flame with the fire of passion, the fire of aversion, the fire of delusion. A flame, I tell you, with birth, aging and death, with sorrows, lamentations, pains, distresses and despairs. The ear is a flame, sounds are a flame." Ellipses, which means a whole bunch of the previous stuff is repeated. "The nose is a flame, aromas are a flame, the tongue is a flame and flavors are a flame. The body is a flame, tactile sensations are a flame. The intellect is a flame, ideas are a flame, intellect consciousness is a flame, intellect contact is a flame. And whatever there is that arises in dependence on intellect contact, experiences pleasure, pain, or neither pleasure nor pain, that too is a flame, a flame with what? A flame with the fire of passion, the fire of aversion, the fire of delusion. A flame, I say, with birth, aging and death, with sorrows, lamentations, pains, distresses and despairs. Seeing thus, the instructed disciple of the noble ones grows disenchanted with the eye, disenchanted with forms, disenchanted with eye consciousness, disenchanted with eye contact. And whatever there is that arises in dependence on eye contact, experiences pleasure, pain, or neither pleasure nor pain, with that too, he grows disenchanted. And same with the other sense states." True, so then we go on to, "He grows disenchanted with the intellect, disenchanted with ideas, disenchanted with intellect consciousness, disenchanted with intellect contact. And whatever there is that arises in dependence on intellect contact, experiences pleasure, pain, or neither pleasure nor pain, with that too, he grows disenchanted. Disenchanted, he becomes dispassioned. Through dispassion, he is released. With release, there is knowledge, released. He discerns that birth is ended, the holy life fulfilled, the task done. There is nothing further for this world. This is what the Blessed One said, gratified, the monks delighted in the Blessed One's words. And while this explanation was being given, the minds of the thousand monks, through lack of clinging and sustenance, will be released from affluence." Abracadaver, short sermon, released from affluence. So what is he talking about here? So, back to the beginning of the Buddha's story. You all know, grew up in a palace, and he went out and he encountered somebody who was sick, somebody who was old, somebody who was dying, and then he encountered a mendicant. And what this did to him, he encountered dukkha. Dukkha, which we generally translate to sufferance, but which is sometimes a helpful translation, but it's such a broad term. It's the whole mess of being alive, of samsara. It's unsatisfactoriness, discomfort, dis-ease, feeling a little bit out of place, wanting something, not wanting something, wanting something to go away, afraid something's going to change. It's this whole mess, all of this is dukkha. And the Buddha, who had been protected from this for all of his life, encountered dukkha. And he realized there was dukkha here, and there was dukkha everywhere. And so, his quest, his lifelong quest, and Zen, you would say, this became his koan, was how do I bring dukkha to an end? Dogen's koan, who founded Sutodzen, was when he saw his mother, his mother's corpse being cremated with the smoke, so that's the same question. This is dukkha, how do we bring dukkha to an end? So he left, and he went on a journey, exploring how to do that. He had, he had any number of experiences, but there are a couple of teachers in particular that are talked about, as teachers who went to and learned from. Their names are Alara and Udatta. And these were very accomplished spiritual teachers, very accomplished spiritual practitioners. And I don't remember which level, but I think they were either the third and the fourth jhana, the third and the fourth jhana, immaterial jhana, or the second and the third immaterial jhana were the level at which they were very stable and they practiced. And what this is about, the jhanas, as most of you know, these are like these absorption states that are one of the the four-letter words of Buddhists, and a lot of people are scared of them, they don't like to go there. But they're really, they're actually kind of important, and they're important as practical things, because they're simply descriptions of experience meditation, the signpost and guides that we can use to spot what's happening in our meditation practice, and to help us steer, to help us set direction. But at another level, what they're describing, the first couple of the jhanas, there is deeply embodied joy and pleasure. And there's just a really strong sense of happiness, vibrancy, aliveness and joy or pleasure in the body. And as we settle through those, we get to the fourth jhana, where that's basically peace and equanimity. And that's really losing a sense of this physical body. There's no longer strong contact with the sense, with this physical body. And they're moving from that into the immaterial jhanas. What that's about is actually realizing, this is not me. I am not this physical body, it's deeply connected with... Realizing we are the energy body, the subtle body. That which Kundalini talks about is the chakras and all the energy feeds off the chakras. We start recognizing the reality of, that is what I really am, and all of this, all of this is kind of stuff I'm making up. In the same way, we make up money. We all know money's a story. It's kind of an important story in our lives, but it's a story. We all know democracy is a story. It's a story that's important in our lives, but it's a story. And we know these are fabrications, we know they're not permanent. We know we could change money, and if there's a great depression again, the money will be worth it. The reason that is just a story is there's stuff that comes together, physical and mental stuff, the five aggregates, that comes together, and we make something out of it. The same is true of this veil, those cushions, of all of us. We're making this up in a very real sense. It's not saying there's nothing here, but it's how we relate to it and what we see that is a fundamental error. So moving into the immaterial jhanas is slipping into a place of recognizing the deep truth of that, and moving instead to identifying with these subtle bodies, which are bound with space, bound with consciousness, no-thingness, and then beyond perception and non-perception, those are the four immaterial jhanas. So you're moving into ever more subtle ways of identifying who I am. So the Buddha learned with these teachers and practiced with these people, and he reached a place with those teachers, where the teacher said, "You have what I've got, you have mastered everything I could teach you. Why didn't you come sit alongside me and teach with me?" And the Buddha said, "Thank you for what you've given me, it's wonderful. This is not freedom. It's powerful, it's beautiful, it's been really helpful, and thank you again. But it's not what I'm looking for, because I can see, I am still fabricating, there's still a need here, and there's still something that's sticking, and I'm not sure what that is. I need to keep going, and I need to find what that is." So then he went off from there, and he hung out with these ascetics, and became the five ascetics, and he became really envious of them doing one of these practices of self-mortification. And then he realized that that was not going to work either. It was, again, he's looking for this complete liberation, this complete freedom, this complete end of dukkha. And he realized that that was not going to get him there either. And then there's a story about one day, he remembered as a child, it's actually unclear whether he was a child or a young adult, but he remembered sitting under the rose apple tree and looking around. And he was basically, he was in a settled, calm place, and he realized that was peaceful, and that was... That was the rock, that was the start of the path. And he realized, it's like, if we should go out right now, and it's a beautiful sunny day, go for a walk in the woods, sit by a river. There's something really peaceful that happens, there's an opening that happens when we allow that. And he realized, that's the way in. So he went off, and he pulled all this together, and sat, and then he woke up, right? And woke up is, root is bhut, to wake up, which is, you know, progressively, he realized, I'm not this, and I'm this subtle body. Waking up is waking up from this dream and seeing the reality. Once you wake up, like we woke up this morning from whatever was going on last night, and said, "That was sleep, that was dream, this is awake." The same discontinuity to wake up and say, "Oh, this is what it is, that was a dream, this is a dream, this is reality." Again, it's not to say there's nothing here, but the way we apprehended is just flawed, because we've got this veil in front of us. So that was the experience that took him into his teaching. And then he came out, and he walked back to, into the world. He thought long and hard about, what do I do with this? Because this, this is wonderful. And he realized that he couldn't stop there. He had to go back into the world and deal with the dukkha that he saw in the world. He dealt with this here, but that was incomplete until he dealt with what was out there. So he returned to the five ascetics, and they were just in awe of this radiant figure who was approaching them. And so after their initial lack of interest in this person showing up, they decided, let's listen to what this guy has to say. And he preached his first sermon, Dhamma Chakpa Pavitana Sutta, which is the turning of the wheel of the Dhamma. And that's the sutra in which he says, he unfolds the Four Noble Truths in the Noble Eightfold Path, which of course becomes the cornerstone of all Buddhist teaching. Four Noble Truths and the Noble Eightfold Path. So I'm going to just quote a couple of lines from the sutra to make a couple of points here. "So there are two extremes that are not to be indulged in by one who has gone forward. Which truth? That which is devoted to sensual pleasure, in connection with sensuality, often translated as self-gratification, which is base, vulgar, common, ignoble and unprofitable. And that which is devoted to self-affliction or self-mortification, which is painful, ignoble and profitable. Avoiding both of these extremes, the middle way was realized by the Thittagata, producing vision, producing knowledge, leading to stillness, to direct knowledge, to self-awakening, to unbinding." Remember that word, we're going to be using the word unbinding quite a lot. Unbinding is a complete letting go. There's absolutely nothing that sticks. There's... In the different body literature, in the Prajnaparamita literature, there's the Vimalakirti Sutra. There's a part of that story, Vimalakirti is a deeply realized householder who is sick, and the Buddha sends in, one by one, all of his disciples, the arahats and the bodhisattvas, and everybody goes in to see this sick person. And they're all scared of going in to see him, because they know this is a profoundly wise and realized person. And they're afraid that they will be, they will look, they will be inadequate in his presence. And of course, they're, so they all go in, one after another. And at some point in the story, you've got all these people in this room with one of the kirti lying on his bed, sick, and petals are raining down from the sky, flower petals. And the arahats don't understand it, because petals are sticking on them, and they're trying to brush up all these flower petals. And the bodhisattvas, the flowers, the petals, just slide right off them, they don't understand it. And of course, this is, there's a majority of line in this, talking about the Mahayana practice as opposed to the Theravada practice, and how one is higher than the other. But there's an important point, is getting that, which is Buddha, before he became Buddha, when he was practicing with Alara and Liu Daka, would have been in the same place as these people were described in the Sutta, the arahats. Profoundly wise, a very great spiritual teacher, and yet there's still something sticking. Petals would still stick, still very beautiful, but they still stick. This unbinding, this complete liberation, nothing lasts. Even the most subtle, just sliding right off. So that's what we're going to end up talking about, and the middle... Avoiding both these extremes, the middle way realized by the Thittagata, etc. The middle way realized is the path between self-gratification and self-mortification. In another later sutra, the Katchiyana Sutta, it's the path between existence and non-existence, becoming and non-becoming. It's not a compromise. It's not a little bit of one and a little bit of the other, but just not too much. It is avoiding the extremes. It's running down the middle of the river without touching either bank. There is no self-gratification, there is no self-mortification. What is it if there is no self-gratification or self-mortification? There is the middle, there's just the middle, it touches neither. That's what's meant by the middle path, middle way. It's not a little bit, it's bouncing off the banks, it's just avoiding the extremes, completely avoiding the extremes. So skipping on down, and this monks is the noble truth of the cessation of stress. So there's the three, there's the existence of stress, the origination or cause of stress, and then the cessation of stress. And then the fourth one is the practice leading to cessation of stress, or the path leading to cessation of stress, which is the Noble Eightfold Path. So the third one, and this monks is the noble truth, it's the cessation of stress, remainderless bathing in cessation, renunciation, relinquishment, release, and letting go of that very craving. This is a way of describing not touching the banks, not being pulled into either of banks. It's not, the problem that he's pointing at is it's not accidental we bump into the banks or we touch the banks. There's something going on that causes us to be drawn to the banks. It's this letting go of that very craving. Letting go of that very craving is avoiding being pulled to the banks, avoiding all these temptations that are out there. Tempt, I'll make a few up, but you know, so I want a cup of coffee, need to go to the bathroom, it's a little cold in there. I should have remembered to do something before I left the house this morning. All of these little things, just avoiding letting that land at all. All of those are things, they're mind games that start trying to pull us out, trying to stick to something, to grab and hold for something, and creating this self-out of all these things we're grabbing hold of. And this is a part of the cessation, renunciation, relinquishment, release, and letting go of that very craving. And we talk about it in terms of letting go of the craving, but there's, you can look at it from the other side, as the craving is reaching out to us, it's like a petal's falling down, and we don't let them stick. It's just another way of, you know, to be non-attached is to let go, but another way of looking at it is to let stuff in. Because often, people approach letting go, it's like they put your hand up, so I'm not going to touch that. But you're creating resistance, you're creating a wall. So you're actually holding on to something, you're holding on to the walls, protecting. To let go is actually to take all the walls down and just to let stuff in, and it just goes straight through it, if you let all the walls in. So letting go of this very craving is the same as letting this very craving in. But not the craving, if you do it right, doesn't last, so it works both ways around. So skipping a long way down here. This is what, that is what the Blessed One said, gratifying the group of five monks, delighted in the Blessed One's words. And while this explanation is being given, there arose the venerable Konanya, the dustless, stainless Dhamma eye. Whatever is subject to origination is all subject to cessation. Sounds blah, but that really is the deep penetrating insight that gives rise to this whole thing. Whatever is subject to origination is all subject to cessation. That is the deep teaching, if you will. And then you've got the twirling chain of causation, you've got the five aggregates of clinging. All of these teachings, karma is another one. All of these teachings are ways of helping us understand and ultimately intuit simply this, whatever is subject to origination is all subject to cessation. Because if it's subject to origination, therefore subject to cessation, means there's no stuff to hold on to. Means trying to hold on to it will only cause suffering, only cause dukkha. So there's no, you realize, there's actually nobody to hold on to anything, and there's nothing to hold on to. So the whole exercise is doomed to cause dukkha. And that's what he's trying to teach us. And this analysis, the Four Noble Truths, is actually a physician's analysis. And if you think about it, it's the same as a physician's analysis today, it was very much a physician's analysis at the time. Here's a disease, it's called dukkha. Here's the cause of the disease. Plenty, craving, our ego. I can cure you of this disease. No, I can't. You can cure yourself of this disease. I can help you see how to do it, but there is a tool, there is a medicine that can cure you of this disease. The third noble truth, cessation of suffering is possible. The fourth noble truth, here's the medicine. The Noble Eightfold Path. So, this statement, whatever is subject to origination is all subject to cessation, that's telling you about the disease. The rest of the sutra was saying, and there's a cure, and here's the cure. And that's the wonder of Buddhism, is it gives us a cure. It doesn't just diagnose the disease, it helps us figure out the cure. So that's the teaching. All right, so... The second sermon, which is the Panyacha Sutta, which is the Five Brethren. This was taught to the same five people. After the first sutra, Verbal Konanya, Konanya Nanda, he entered the path, he began a stream entry, which is like one of the stages towards waking up, it's like deep understanding, but there's still a little sense of self-stuck in. After the second one, all of them, all five of them, ended up in that same place. So, again, painful teachings. So I won't read the whole sutra, but this one, this one, well, I'll read extracts and then talk about it, let's do it that way. So he says, on that one, he addressed the five monks, form is not self. If form was self, this form would not lend itself to dis-ease, discomfort, unsatisfactoriness. It would be possible to say with regard to form, let my form be thus, let my form not be thus. If form was self, he could do that for them. But precisely because form is not self, this form lends itself to dis-ease, discomfort, unsatisfactoriness, suffering. And it is not possible to say with regard to form, let my form be thus, let my form not be thus. Same with all the other aggregates. What do you think, monks, is form constant or inconstant? Most often translated as permanent or impermanent, but there's a valence around constant. I like the translation of constant or inconstant, because inconstant has a sense of unreliability to it, but impermanent doesn't. So I like this choice, this word choice. What do you think, monks, is form constant or inconstant? Inconstant, unreliable, impermanent, undependable, Lord. And is that which is inconstant peaceful or stressful? Stressful, causing dukkha, causing unsatisfactoriness. And is it fitting to regard what is constant, stressful, subject to change, as this is mine? This is myself, this is what I am? No, Lord. Reminds me of a conversation, I said it in that turn, but it reminds me of a conversation I used to have with my daughters when we were at college. Every now and again, something would go wrong, you know, like every semester or every one or two semesters, she'd give me a call, and she'd be on the edge of a panic attack. And it's like, Daddy, 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 it's like, slow down, woman. Is this going to matter in five years? No, Daddy. It's the same kind of thing here. There's this gentle realization, is there anything here of which we can say, this is mine, this is myself, this is what I am? No, Lord, no, there isn't. Intellectually, when we have this, when we sit down and we talk about it, we get it, we get it. But then we've got to let it really soak in, and we've got to take the medicine. Medicine is how do we use this to release essence? So it goes on, same kind of approach with everything else, and then towards the end. "Seeing thus, the instructed disciple of the noble ones grows disenchanted with form, disenchanted, he becomes dispassioned. Through dispassion, he is released. With release, there is the knowledge, released. He discerns that birth is ended, the holy life is fulfilled, the task is done, there is nothing further in this world." Hang on, didn't we just read that? I think it's, it's language that recurs, I think it's in the Chakpa Pavitana, I didn't underline it, so I can't see it. But it's, oh no, we read it in the Five Sermon, it's the language in the Five Sermon. And recurring language, the Anapanasati Sutta, which is the, that means in-breath, out-breath, in-breath teaching. It's the mindfulness of breathing, essentially translated. This is the practice that people generally say, this is what Buddha was doing when he woke up. And it's, you start following the breath, and then you follow the breath into the body, and you realize the breath is the body, which is this move in the jhanas that we're talking about, where you realize, actually, the body really is the breath, and the breath is energy, not air. And this thing, I think, is the body sitting on top of it, it's just, it's a story on top of what the real body is. So you make that move, and then you move into feelings and then mind. So you make that move, and then you move into feelings, and then mind. And then you move into the Dhammas, which are the fabricated world, everything. And you see impermanence in the world, and then disenchantment, dispassion, and release. Same steps. So this is, these are the, these are the steps that happen when we start seeing this truth. No, Lord, no, Lord. And if we keep coming back to it, then our passion, our emotional energy, our entanglement starts to get looser. As we start to become disenchanted with these things that we used to be really emotionally tied to. Things that used to get us really excited, it's not so exciting anymore. Disenchantment becomes dispassion, and eventually it becomes release. So that's the trajectory here. And then the last point, we're actually going to talk about this one a little later, but I'll talk about it now, so there's a place for it. Birth is ended, the holy life fulfilled. Birth is the penultimate step on the twelve chain of causation, and the twelve chain of causation begins with ignorance, and goes on up through feeling, contact feeling, craving clinging, on up to birth, and then all this and death. And the idea is, there's a whole ton of stuff happens in storytelling and in creating these ideas about the world and these experiences of things happening, before anything really comes into existence. Think about money, for example, or democracy. There's a whole world of stuff happens before that becomes a thing. Once it becomes a thing, it has to come to an end. There's no way anything else can happen, it has to come to an end. So once birth has happened, we're in a mess. Whether it's this birth into this physical form, or whether it's the birth of an idea like, I really want to get this university qualification, I really want this job. Whatever it is, if there's a birth of something, it has to come to an end. It has to die, and when it does, that's awful. Suffering, lamentation, pain, grief, and despair. So birth is ended, means that's cut off. There is no more birth, there is no more becoming. If that, if there's no more birth, there's no more becoming. We've stopped this cycle of dukkha, we've stopped this escalation of dukkha. So that, we'll talk more about that later. So that's the second sermon. So now, ready to get into the third sermon. There are actually a couple of unrecorded talks that apparently happened in the interim, and they're mentioned somewhere in the canon that these other talks happened. So technically, this isn't the third talk, but it's the third recorded sermon. And it was several months later, and it was delivered to a group of a thousand ascetics who had previously practiced the sacred fire ritual. And this was common practice in northern India at the time. Brahmanic tradition was very much a fire-oriented tradition. We have, coming down to us, in the Bhagavad Gita, there is a line. There's a little section that is used as a meal guide in the Vedanta tradition, and probably in many other traditions within the Sinaita Dharma, Hinduism. And I've got Christopher Richard's translation, which I really like. Brahman is the ritual, Brahman is the offering, Brahman is he that offers into the fire that is Brahman. So Brahman is everything, but in particular, there's this fire, it's all the meal, the whole meal, and everything, the meal is a metaphor for life. Brahman is the ritual, Brahman is the offering, Brahman is he that offers into the fire that is Brahman. So everything is being offered into this fire. And the fire itself is Brahman, and everything going into the fire, and everything doing the offering is Brahman. Fire is just the central place in the Brahmanic tradition. So that's what these thousand ascetics came out of, that practice and related fire practices. It was, now I'm picking this up from odds and ends I've read, so I've read, I've read, odds and ends I've read. So this is not scholarly, and you could go off and you could find other things that or contradicting places and add a lot of detail, but directionally, this is, I'm confident, directionally, this is what's going on. So the culture at the time, the philosophy at the time, we had the four elements, and in Buddhism, we use the same four elements, earth, water, air, and fire. And these don't map to the, I don't know how many, we're up to 120, 130 elements in the periodic table, and add more every year, I guess. But, you know, many of them are naturally occurring anyway, so it's kind of red herrings. But, I mean, it doesn't map to that, because those work in slightly different ways. These elements are regarded as, so you've got a physical form here, there's a solidity to this. And that's represented by the earth elements. Not saying they're muddy, it's an earth element, it's what makes things have that solid feel. There's a fluidity here, most obviously, if you can't, blood comes gushing out, spittle comes out of my mouth when I go to the bathroom, there's liquids moving, which, there's a fluidity here, which shows up as fluids, and it shows up internally with some of the motions possible, and that's the water elements. The fire element is heat, most likely. But these elements are how we, we see, the philosophy saw ourselves as being constructed of these elements, which are like properties. Safari is one of those properties, if you will. And as I say, it was very central. Part of the culture, I believe, households were supposed to have through fires. And if you think about it, fire was magic. We're still at a time where, if your fire went out, what did you do? You'd probably go around to your neighbor's house and take some of their fire and try and bring it back. Or you could rub some sticks together, or get your flint and rub a stick in the flint, knock sparks off a flint. There were things you could do to make fire, but we were in a place where people didn't have electricity, and I mean, fire was incredibly important and very magical. So there's a property here that's really important. And I'm going to now jump, so what I'm about to talk about is the way Buddha talked about, the way Buddha was using this. And you'll see it very closely related to what would have happened in the Sinaita Dharma. The difference here being that in the Sinaita Dharma, in the Brahmanic traditions, the release of fire would have been releasedified into Atman, or into Brahman, or Ishvara. There would have been, this was soul going into the bigger soul. Buddha wasn't using the metaphor as soul, he was using it as a release. So there's a really important word, upadana. Upadana means fuel, and it means clinging. Because what people saw fire as being, you've got a bunch of twigs or logs, and you've got fire on the logs, and the fire's burning. And two things are happening here related to upadana, which we translate usually as clinging. That's the word that is used in the Buddhist literature, the clinging, so it's a really important word. And when we talk about clinging, it has this direct reference to this property of fire. So the fire is existing with the fuel. And what's happening, on the one hand, the fire is feeding on the fuel, on the upadana. So that's what's sustained. And on the other hand, it's not just feeding, it's actually clinging to it. The fire is stuck. Keeps on bouncing off, if you look at a fire, it bounces off and it comes back, there's gaps in the flames and they go back down. It's stuck on the fuel. So this is the metaphor that's being used. It's stuck. And the word release is about being released. The word unbinding is the fire unbound from upadana, unbound from the fuel, and unbound from the act of clinging to the fuel. What does that look like? Want to be experienced, you can't, this is beyond words, you can't talk about it, which is why we use metaphors like the fire. And if you, if you try and place yourself back in that time when fire was such a precious thing, hopefully you can see the power of that metaphor, you were all used to seeing this magical thing. And if we spent more time outside sitting around campfires at night, and those of you who did Girl Guides and Scouts and whatever, you probably do spend time doing that. And you, there's something magical about sitting around the fire and watching the flames. And then thinking about the flames getting unbound. And what would it be like to be unbound? To be released from fuel and from the act of clinging? That's what this is pointing. So let's read the sutra again. Here we go. I have heard that on one occasion, the Blessed One was staying near Gaya, at Gaya Head, with a thousand monks. And again, these monks are monks who have been practitioners of this fire ritual. There he addressed the monks. The all is a flame. Which all is a flame? So the all, it is capitalized here, which is indicating, it's pointing at this definition of the all. The all is everything you can know. So there's a lot of conversation in the Pali texts about people coming and asking Buddha about the universe, and the world, the all, is simply what your senses bring in. That is the all, your world. Uchiyama, who's a Soka's end teacher, he wrote, when you die, your world dies with you. And if you think about it, it's absolutely true. Your world dies with you. That is the all. What's outside the realm of that all is something you can't know. Because if you can, it becomes part of the all, it's accessible to your senses. You can't know what's outside the all, you can't worry about what's outside the all. It's not defined, and it can't be defined. The all is precisely that to which you have access to this way. So the all, my entire world, the entirety of my universe is a flame. The I is a flame, forms are a flame, my consciousness is a flame. Eighteen sense gates, or eighteen sense realms. There's the subject of consciousness, subject of consciousness, the object of consciousness, and then the consciousness that connects. Those three are all factors here. If any one of those misses, is missing, the world comes to an end. If there's just the I, and there's consciousness, but there's nothing perceived, then what is the world? If there's just the two elements of form, the I and the I, the object of I, but there's no consciousness, where's the world? All three of these are involved, same with the other five senses, including my consciousness. They're all aflame. All of them have this attribute of clinging, a flame here is pointed back at this word, upadana. The flame isn't the fire. Flame is what's happening to the fire and what's happening to the fuel, it's a pointing of upadana. It's pointing at this feeding, at this clinging, at the act of burning, at this being stuck. So all of this, everything here is aflame, because if you think about it, when we see something, there is, when something registers, my phone, that's my phone, if you wanted to come take my phone, that'd be like on Twitch, if you took my phone away from me. And it beeps, and I get sucked into the beep. Turn it on mute, it's just a clock running now, but if the battery ran out, I wouldn't have a clock anymore. There's all of these little things, they're very subtle, and we don't notice them because we're so tuned into them. But our life is full, our life is nothing but, as long as we live in this physical form, our life is nothing, physical or mental form, the forms. And life is nothing but, it is comprised precisely of these little moments of clinging. We assemble these moments of clinging all the time. That's how we assemble our world. And that's what we assemble as the world, it's all these little instances of clinging, fire just touching down, landing, stuff. That's our world, it's all flame. A flame with what? A flame, oh sorry, actually, I skipped a chunk. Forms of flame, my consciousness. Whatever it is that arises in dependence on our content, experiences pleasure, pain, or neither pleasure nor pain. That's a reference to one of the, one of these elements in this twelve chain of causation, which is feeling terms. So the first thing that happens as we move up this, as we, as things start catching fire, as our world starts catching fire, which is precisely, our world starts forming, our world starts being born, to be born, to be on fire. The first thing, or something that happens very early on, is there's a contact that happens. When that contact happens, there's a feeling term, there's a valence that happens there. It's pleasant, or it's unpleasant, or it's neutral, neither pleasant nor unpleasant. That is dependent on this contact happening. When that contact happens, this little valence shows up. That is a gentle flame, and what we do with that can turn it into a roaring flame. Because we generally respond to that. If it's pleasant, ooh, I like that, ooh, I really like that, let me stoke that a little bit more. Goodness, more of it, stronger, louder, sweeter? Going down the senses, right? But with that feeling term, we generally stoke the pleasant ones, and with the unpleasant ones, ooh, I don't like that. And so we build walls and build stronger resistances, and by doing that, we build this sense of self, and the wall itself becomes a fire, our response becomes an attachment to rejection. We're building this fire. A flame with it, so that's the feeling terms. That too is aflame, aflame with what? A flame with the fire of passion, the fire of aversion, the fire of delusion, that's what I was just talking about. Fire of passion, what? Get me more. A fire of aversion. Get me hence. The fire of delusion. It's more subtle, but it happens, not knowing, gets stuck in a different mess. A flame, I tell you. And that leads on up the chain through craving and clinging into becoming, and then birth. A flame with birth. We think of birth as a wonderful thing, and it is wonderful, and it is beautiful, but we get stuck on it. Whether that's birth of a being, or birth of an idea, or a dream, or a hope, or the latest, greatest American novel, or an album by Jim Morrison, his Come Back From The Dark Side Of The Moon. I mean, just all these wonderful things, they're births. But Jim Morrison is going to really die. So that birth, aging, death, with sorrow, lamentation, pain, grief, and despair. Same with the other senses. So seeing thus, to the other senses, the other sense consciousnesses, and the other sense objects. Seeing thus, the instructed disciple of the noble ones grows disenchanted with the I. To grow disenchanted with it, you see, it doesn't mean you cut it out and throw it away, it just means it loses its power of it. When I used to love watching movies, certain kind of movie, or I loved certain art, I liked going walking and looking at things, going to a museum to look at old architectural finds. That no longer excites. I realize what's happening when I do that, is I'm feeding this fire, I'm adding fuel, I'm building the flames, I'm stoking this thing, I'm making it hotter and hotter and hotter. I'm adding fuel, I'm building the flames, I'm stoking this thing, I'm making it hotter and hotter and hotter. Doesn't mean I don't engage in the world and let things flow through, but my reason for doing it is very different. Reason for doing it is Buddha's reason, is coming to help end suffering. That's the only reason he came back, to help end dukkha. But there's a deep, there's a growing recognition that to engage the senses to derive pleasure out of it, it's really not going to make me happy. It's not going to make anybody happy. By not making me happy, it's going to make me less useful to others. It's going to make other people around me less happy. So feeding the senses in the sense to create pleasure is not a good thing to do. So we start by the deep recognition that this is what's going on. And this is, you know, the reason I laid these three sutras together is the first one was the diagnosis and the condition and the cure. The second one was really laying it on with the three marks of enlightenment. This is a way of, kind of, it's a way of very quickly bringing the Noble Eightfold Path together in one short step. The Noble Eightfold Path allows us to see the impermanence, the unsatisfactoriness. What's the other word to use? I said I liked, inconstant, the inconstancy of everything, of all dhammas. And if we see their inconstancy, we see that they can only cause dukkha. And if we see they can only cause dukkha, we realize there is nothing here of which you can say, this is mine, this is myself, this is what I am. So this is the disenchantment that grows out of us. Seeing this clearly, really seeing this, the instructed disciple grows disenchanted with form, disenchanted with feeling, disenchanted with perception, and these are the steps in the, no, these are the five aggregates, I'm sorry. Uh, disenchanted with fabrications, disenchanted with consciousness, disenchanted with everything that I think of as a me. Disenchanted, he becomes dispassionate. Dispassionate isn't a negative thing. Dispassionate means just doesn't get excited. It doesn't mean don't be in the world. It doesn't mean don't see things as being beautiful. It means don't get stuck on them. Becomes dispassionate. Through dispassion, through recognizing not to get stuck, he is released, he is freed. So there's a, there's a subtlety here. He is released. When stuck, there's a being. When stuck, there is a person who is stuck. Because to be stuck means you've got these two things coming together and they're holding themselves together. This release, where does the flame go when it's released? You can't find it. It's actually why, um, in most of the Pali canon, the Buddha refers to, he said, not as Buddha, but as the Tathagata. The Tathagata means thus come, thus come and thus gone. Because from the side of the released, there is nobody there. The ability to show up in the world and be in this sack of skin and bones allows utility, allows working to release dukkha. But from that side, and, and we all see it, we all see it personally. So we say, oh, the Buddha, what a beautiful human being. But from the side of the Buddha, there is nobody there. So the reference is the Tathagata. There are a number of stories that show up in different places about, um, people kind of cheating Mara or Yama, death. And the idea is, um, Yama goes looking for people who died, goes looking for their souls. Goes looking for that which you can hold on to, to suck down in hell. And Buddhism wouldn't be a soul, it would be the, the, uh, the karma that is going to be reborn. And but if somebody is truly released, if nothing sticks, nothing lands, they can't be seen by Yama. So that shows up and that's what that's about, that's the same thing, this is release. It's just, um, and, um, so we can get a little taste of this. Sounds very mysterious and thought, you know. But if you play the piano or guitar or you do woodworking, you love your little workshop and you make beautiful items, if you make jewelry, if you're a car mechanic and you're popping the hood up on your old car, you know, you know. I mean, um, sort of, when you, when you can work with fast, old cars where you don't have certain electronics, um, you can really get engaged in that activity. And there's a, there's a sense of joy and a sense of loss of self that starts to happen. And we can lift our head up four hours later, have no idea how much time has passed and be aware that what was going on there, there was nobody there. There was just this engaged activity and there was this sense of joy of being released. So this is not saying there's nothing here right now. It's just saying we're relating to it completely wrong. Wrongly. And we do get these little tastes to point us in that direction, to, so we can see what this is really about. Now, if we see what that's about, we can start to see maybe how, what that would look like if we let that leak into the rest of our life. If we gave that soft edges and if we were able to move in the rest of our life in that way. If we were able to start seeing where things land or we start landing and we start creating these little fires and maybe just let those folks go. You can't blow them out because blowing them out is aversion. Just got to let them go. Let them in. Become porous and invisible. With release, there is knowledge released. He discerns that birth is ended. Once we stop making stuff, there's no more making. Stuff comes into existence, but we see it as impermanence. I go to the grocery store and I buy some glasses because I broke them yesterday. But I know that glass is already broken. Uh, you know, it, it doesn't matter. It's, it's useful, it's got a purpose, but it doesn't have an existence as a glass. It's, it's just this utility. This is a bell, but no, it's, 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 what, what is bell? It's a function and for so long as it's here, I can use it for that. But if it were to shatter or if somebody were to take it, so what? It's just a not getting stuck on. So birth doesn't mean nothing. It means no things, nothing that we're creating, that we're trying to give an essence to, we're actually really taking seriously in that sense. This is, um, this is what the Blessed One said. "Gratified, the group of five monks delighted in the Blessed One's words. And while this explanation was being given, the minds of the group of five monks, through lack of clinging and sustenance, which is this upadana, clinging, sustenance, being fuel, were released from efforts." That means a whole ton of these things, there, there are ten categories of things that stick. And this is releasing a bunch of them. So it's sufficient level of conviction that the truth, this truth is real and it's, the idea is you have these thresholds, just like these thresholds we talked about in the Germans where, um, at certain levels, this insight becomes sufficiently strong, then it lasts. And in the story of the canon, um, that has impact on how many rebirths you have, ultimately having that. I think I read it wrong in the ending space, they were saying, this is what the Blessed One said. "Gratified, the monks delighted in the Blessed One's words. And while this explanation was being given, the minds of the thousand monks, through lack of clinging and sustenance..." Okay, um. So let me read some of the rest of these. I've got a bunch more sutras. And you have the same too. So I'll just read some of these extracts and then we will talk. So the first one, um, Majumena Kaya seventy-five, which is the Magandia Sutta. Um, this is an extract, it's about, I don't know, three pages long. So this is the, the stub end. And I'm just going to focus on the last paragraph. Um, the story is, as we've, as we've got it here, um, somebody is blind and another guy gives him this dirty rag to wipe his eyes and says, you wipe your eyes and you'll be able to see. And he doesn't, it doesn't work. So then he bumps into somebody who's a doctor. And, uh, the doctor concocts medicines for him and he can actually see. And he said, my gosh, I've been fooled for so long by the guy with the oily rag. And the Buddha says, "In that same way, Magandia, if I were to teach you the Dhamma, this that is the freedom from disease, this is that unbinding. And you on your part were to know that freedom from disease and see that unbinding, then together with the arising of your eyesight, you would abandon whatever passion and delight you felt with regard to the five clinging aggregates. And it would occur to you, my gosh, how long have I been fooled, cheated and deceived by this mind?" And that's the teaching. The teaching is we have been fooled for so long. We are clinging to form, to feeling, to perception, to mental formation, to consciousness. We are on fire. That clinging is the fire. We are burning because we have been fooled and we're clinging to this. And if we could but encounter this doctor who is the Buddha and recognize the truth of the teachings, which is, you don't need to do this. Just see through it. Starts, start by seeing impermanence, inconstancy. And if we really see inconstancy, release will start happening. Disenchantment, dispassion will start happening. My gosh, how long have I been fooled, cheated and deceived by this mind? For in clinging, it was just form that I was clinging to. It was just feeling that I was clinging to. And perception, it was just perception, just fabrications, just consciousness that I was clinging to. With my clinging as a requisite condition, there arises becoming, birth, aging and death, sorrow, lamentation, pain, distress and despair. And thus is the origin of this entire mass of suffering. Different words, but it's pointing to the same thing. We are fooled and we end up clinging to the aggregates. We end up letting things, things stick. We end up seeing things with our eye and thinking it's a real thing that we can hold on to. That will last and it works. I'll read a poem out of the Itibetaka, which is, um, a collection of, it's a short collection of short sutras and many, many mini poems. Uh, this was said by the Blessed One, said by Arhat. "So I have heard monks, there are these three fires. Which three? Fire of passion, the fire of aversion, the fire of delusion. These are the three fires." And I picked this to read because, um, it's just, it's, it's a different flavor of the same metaphor, using fires in a nuanced and slightly different way. "The fire of passion burns in a morte, delighting and smitten with sensual desires. The fire of aversion in a malevolent person taking life. The fire of delusion in a bewildered person ignorant of the little teaching. Not understanding these fires, people fond of self-identity, unreleased from Mara's shackles, swell the ranks of hell, wounds of common animals, demons, the realm of the hungry ghosts. While those who day and night are devoted to the message of the rightly self-awakened, put out the fire of passion, constantly perceiving the foul. They, superlative people, put out the fire of aversion with goodwill and the fire of delusion with discernment, leading to penetration. They, the masterful, untiring by day and night, having put out the fires, having without remainder comprehended stress dukkha, are without remainder totally unbanned, released, free. Nearby, they, the wise with an attainer in wisdom's noble vision, right gnosis, directly knowing the ending of birth, come to no further become. Once you see the fire for what it is and you can let it go, you're free. You will no longer get stuck by the tricks of birth and becoming. They're just things we hold on to, that's what that means. So this is, um, the next one is, uh, from the Udana, which is another one of these short collections, Bahia Sutta. Um, this is, uh, one I like to use a lot. Um, and, uh, the story here is Bahia was wandering somewhere on the far side of India. And he was doing just fine, kind of like Buddha in his early days when he was practicing with his early teachers. But realizing that there was something he wasn't quite getting. And it suggested him, he'd go find the Buddha. And he went and he found the Buddha. He walked halfway across India and this is, you know, this is the quest, this is the most important thing in his life. So he, in China, would be with his straw sandals, I don't know whether he had on a stick, but it wouldn't have been expensive if he was hiking boots. And he would have had a rucksack on his lap. All the way across India, very dangerous. Wild animals banned, it's very dangerous. All the way across India until he found the Buddha in northern India. And, uh, he said to the Buddha, please teach me. The Buddha said, not now, I'm, I'm, I'm on my arm, this is the time grounds. Bahia repeated his request, the Buddha said, not now. Bahia repeated it a third time. And the protocol was if you ask a third time, person being requested, had to respond. Because it was clearly a request of great urgency in which protocol. So you asked three times, um, "Teach me, O Blessed One, teach me the Dhamma, teach me, uh, that will be for my long-term welfare and bliss." So the Buddha says, "Then Bahia, you should train yourself thus. In reference to the scene, there will be only the scene, in reference to the herd, only the herd, in reference to the sense, only the sense. In reference to the cognized, only the cognized. This is how you should train yourself. When for you, there will be only the scene in reference to the scene, only the herd in reference to the herd, only the sense in reference to the sense, only the cognized in reference to the cognized. Then Bahia, there is no you in connection with that. When there is no you in connection with that, there is no you there. When there is no you there, you are neither here nor yonder nor between the two. This, just this, is the end of suffering. What that's pointing at is just naked experience. When the I makes contact, that's it, we register that contact. When a thought emerges out of that, that's it, we register that thought. There is no attachment, there is no clinging, there is no fire emerges, there's no sticking, the petals just rush right off. There is a response. If, um, any of us were to leave here and we were to see a small child standing in the middle of the road and a car coming along and the child was clueless, we would not hesitate. We'd jump in there and push the kid out of the way, it wouldn't be any question about it. There's no sticking there, there's just doing, there's a response to what comes up. So this is not to eliminate response of this physical form. What it's doing is saying, that does not need to have this whole cognitive apparatus of storytelling that creates this clinging, that creates these fires that leads to dukkha. That if we really open up, that response itself is the authentic response. And the condition, it's not even a condition, the, um, that happens when released from clinging. So when that happens, this, you know, the, the way we can touch into this, so they've talked about is when we're playing the piano, when we're playing the guitar, when we're doing our pottery or our flower lunch or even washing the dishes or doing the garden. We get into a place where there's no you there. And when there's no you there, so I missed a step, in connection with that, there is no you there. So in connection with gardening or the dishes or whatever, there is... So in connection with gardening or the dishes or whatever, there is no you there. You can get into that. So that's something we can relate to. And when there's no you there, you are neither here nor yonder nor between the two. Yes, if I asked this question, you'd jump back into your body and say, I'm right here. But you actually weren't. You actually weren't because that you is a constructed self sense of identity. And this is precisely saying, that is a construct. It is that construct that brings all this fire together, brings all this burning together. We don't need that construct. Don't need that construct to do the dishes, to do the gardening, to play the piano. In actual fact, when we're in any of those activities, it really kind of gets in the way. It really does get in the way. If you're used to playing an instrument, if you start thinking about it too much, you can't do it anymore. Got to drop into this no mind place to just let it flow. This also points to that language of the Tathagata, thus come thus gone, which is a way of describing this. The distinction being when we're in that gardening state, that's, that's a little window. And there's a, there's a lack of awareness. There can be a non, a non-embodied awareness. There can be presence when that's happened. And when, that's something that we can refine and become more present when we're doing it without yet assembling self-awareness. That's our mindfulness practice. It allows us to become more present during these moments. And then we can, this all links together, but that's a glimpse of what this is. The debating ball. The two Kalasala Sutras. Yeah. So this one, somebody approaches a whole bunch of teachers and asks them about your contemplatives and talks to them, asks them questions. And asks the questions about rebirth. And they all give the same answer. That one is born there. That one is reborn there, pointing in different places. It's just talking about how rebirth works and having some insight into how rebirth works. And the Buddha says, when the disciple is an ultimate person, a foremost person attained to the foremost attainment, the contemplative gotama does not describe it. I mean, my padheadations different views. So when the paragraph begins, this contemplative gotama. The contemplative gotama did not describe the ultimate person. For most people, that one is reborn there, that one is reborn there, this one is reborn here. But if it's the ultimate person, gotama does not describe them. Instead, he describes enough. He has cut through cravings, severed the fetter and by rightly breaking through conceit, has made an end of suffering and distress, has made an end of dukkha. So I'm confused. I'm befuddled. What on earth is going on here? And the Buddha says, of course you're befuddled, Vacha. Of course you're uncertain. When there is a reason for befuddling to continue, uncertainty arises. I designate rebirth for one who has sustenance, but not one who does not have sustenance. Sustenance is again, this word utadana is the word clinging. One who is clinging will bring birth. One who is not clinging is released. And this is part of the, it's the heart of the whole theory of karma in this tradition. So can't avoid touching on it. We don't want to get bogged down. Have to talk about it later. But that's, one who has sustenance is born and designate the birth of one with sustenance, one who is clinging, one who, where there is fire, that's attached. For one where the fire has been released, that's freedom. There can't be any future birth. But it doesn't mean nothing. It just means no future birth. It's mysterious. So of course you're confused because that's what I'm talking about. It wasn't clear. So then he goes on, but Master Gotama, at the moment, a flame is being swept on by the wind and goes a far distance. What do you designate as its sustenance then? Vacha, when a flame is being swept on by the wind and goes a far distance, I designate it as wind sustain for the wind is its sustenance at that time. This sustenance can be really, really subtle. The wind is the most subtle of the four elements. It's the space. This sustenance can be really, really subtle. As long as we're feeding on anything, as long as we've got any sense of identifying with anything here, we're on fire. The flames are burning. And at that moment, when a being sets this body aside and is not yet reborn in another body, what do you designate as its sustenance then? Vacha, when a being sets this body aside and is not yet born in another body, I designate it as craving sustain. That's the wind. For craving is its sustenance at that time. And that's how karma results in rebirth. So the sustenance can be really subtle. And it doesn't have to be in this physical body. It can be in these energy bodies and really subtle places. Alright. I think I'm going to skip this one. I'll finish. I've got two more. I've got one more here and another one. I'll pick that later if I didn't get it all. So I'm going to read the Patikara. Patikara, this is end of the Theravada, which is a book of poems of enlightened, the enlightened women or women becoming enlightened in the Theravada tradition. Very old teachings. And we're actually covering some of these on Thursday evenings. And Patikara was a very famous figure in the female Buddhist tradition, not only female Buddhist tradition. Her poem, I thought, plowing the field with plows, sowing the ground with seeds, supporting their wives and children, young men gather up wealth. So why is it that I, consummate in virtue, a doer of the teacher's bidding, don't gain unbinding? I'm living a good life. I'm doing what the teacher tells me. Why am I still on fire? Why am I still stuck? I'm not lazy or proud. Washing my feet, I noticed the water. And in watching it flow from high to low, my heart was composed like a fine thoroughbred steed. Then taking a lamp, I entered the hut, checked the bedding, lay down on the bed and taking a pen, pulled out the wick. What the flames unbinding was for liberation of awareness. Some point, you know, in the Zen tradition, you hear the stream, enter there. Monk sweeping, sweeping the ground clear. Pebble flies off and hits that bamboo. The noise of the bounced stone hitting the bamboo, bottom drops out, profound awakening and experience. These are people who've been practicing for a long time. So these aren't just spontaneous walk-in doing grocery shopping where you've never heard of Buddhists. These are people who are in these deep spaces, as Buddha was with his first two teachers. And there's just that moment where something happens. It's like you're on, you're out hiking and you, you're in a valley and you've got trees all around you. You come up the hill and round the corner and you come to, the trees fade away. There's an open hillside on one side and you come to the open hillside. This vista opens up in front of you. There's a plain, there's a river, there's mountains, there's a few couple of clouds, the light is gorgeous. Oh my goodness. Wow. We have these moments where suddenly something happens and we see things differently. It's kind of this opening that happens. So these are pointing at those kind of openings. And if you, for those who are cultivated and used to seeing impermanence, this can be, ah! The last little pieces click and it's just like pulling the wick out of a cannon. It will never burn again. Body is gone. Identification of the body, it's just gone. It will never catch fire again. So, so what do we do with this? Almost obviously, we've talked a lot about seeing the fire, about really seeing our clinging, about noticing this contact, feeling the valence of this clinging and recognizing those places in our life where that doesn't happen. Learning from those and trying to just see, understand what this being on fire is really about and how it really does describe our lives. That's our practice of bringing mindfulness to our lives as much as we can and really noticing how all of our sense contacts just naturally give rise to this clinging. And this clinging, by lack of understanding of the impermanence, the inconstancy of what we're bringing contact with, what we're clinging to, is going to cause suffering. So that becomes a practice. So it's a practice of trying to not get stuck. And we'll find ourselves becoming disenchanted. So we'll just, there'll be less stuff that happens. Many folks start to practice and fairly quickly, don't listen to the radio, don't listen to the music as much. They start tuning out the TVs. So we start getting this passionate about us. We start getting disenchanted. That means disconnection. We start letting stuff go. So this is the practice because all of those are releasing some of these little flames and letting the fire cool down. So it's easy to let go of the other things. There's a phrase that my teacher Lisa Ernst uses a lot. And I think it's another way of looking at what we're talking about. Well, there is another way of looking at it. And I hope this one is useful. She uses the word, the phrase spacious awareness. And spacious awareness is a way of describing us opening into this, starting to open into this. So we can have this spacious awareness. I was talking to somebody yesterday and they were in a place, well, I mean, this has happened many times. It's how it's happened to you. But yeah, it's just a conversation yesterday. They're in a place where they just had too many things going on and it felt heavy. Life just felt heavy. And we embody that. We find physical stress as we get tightness in our shoulders. You can get like prickling sensations coming on your back. Even subtle energy starts bursting through. There's ways that this kind of compression can show up and the fire really starts landing and the body really starts burning. We generally chew it out of that. We generally just accept it and don't notice too much. But if we notice the energy of that, kind of the mental space of that, it's closed in and it's heavy. And if we find a way to let some of those go inside, I'm just going to take the weekend off. I'm going to rent an Airbnb. I'm going to go to the beach for a couple of days. And you do that, there's a line. And there's space. There's a real sense of space opening up. And this sense of space is a step into that freedom. Freedom is precisely the space. There's a guided meditation that Lisa uses and I use it sometimes, Mind Like Sky. And you start by looking at the gap between the breaths. You follow the breath in and out. And then you notice the space between the out breath and the in breath. These are pores and it's just a space. And then you notice the in breath and the out breath actually emerge from that space. That space actually is the whole breath. So you let that space expand and that sense of spaciousness expand. And you can bring that out and you can bring it into the world. And it becomes like the sky. And that space, the breath rises and falls, just like clouds floating across the sky. They float across, they don't obstruct the sky. You kind of get in the way of that clear seeing, but there's nothing, they're not eliminating the sky. They pass through and they're gone. And the sky is still there. Just like that still face between the breath is still there underneath the breath rising and falling. And only everything else we build on top of it, like the sense of this physical body. So that spacious awareness is a way of relating to that. We can find that in our meditation. I'm sure you all know it. I'm sure you have all touched this. And intentionally touching into that and staying with that, letting that grow is a way of moving into the spacious awareness. Moving into the space of morphing. I'm going to read another one to finish. Let me see if I want to do it. Yeah, I'll read it because this is another thing we're going to do. So there's a sidebar here before I get into this. This is the, for those who want to scribble this down and read this later, it's the Agutara Nikaya 758. It's called the Nodding Kapala Supa. A N seven fifty eight. So the opening paragraph, Buddha sees Mogayana on the far side of India. And certain, something he was nodding, he was falling asleep. So Buddha decides, I'm going to go help him. I'm going to give him some teaching. So just as a strong man might extend his flexed arm or flex his extended arm, he disappeared from among the bhagis in the deer park at Besakala forest near Crocodile Haunton, reappeared near the village of Kalavallamakta in Madhika, Magadha. Right in front of the venerable Maha Mogalana. Just as a strong man would flex his arm. Or so this shows up a lot in the sutras. Buddha talks to gods, just as a strong man will flex his arm and disappears and reappears somewhere else. There's a story, there are many stories of Deepamak, who was almost contemporary Indian teacher. She was a remarkable person. She was about four foot tall and just profoundly self-realized. Walking through walls, people, many people saw her walk through, just like appear right there, having walked through a wall. Joseph Goldstein saw her floating outside his window. And when he looked up and saw her, she laughed at him and then disappeared. Joseph Goldstein. That's what he says. Anyway, my point is, Joseph Goldstein is this very credible, straight-laced kind of guy. If he's saying this stuff, right? So I'm not going to ask him to believe this per se, but to kind of open your hand to suspend disbelief that this is not what we think it is. That this idea of us really creating this body, creating this identity, creating this me in exactly the same way as we create money as we create democracy, it's exactly the same process. So we do this and then we go across and he teaches him to stop sleeping and I will not do this, I will not do that. And then towards the end, he says, this is the, so Mogalana said to the Blessed One, briefly, Lord, in what respect is a monk released through the ending of craving, utterly complete, utterly free from bonds, a follower of the utterly holy life, utterly consummate, foremost among devas and human beings? There is the case, Mogalana, where a monk has heard altammas are unworthy of attachment. What we're talking about, when we really see and understand this fire, altammas are unworthy of attachment. And most particularly, this is that second sutra, the approach of that second teaching, which is seeing the impermanence and inconstancy of everything. You see that they can on the call stuka and therefore there is nothing that is worthy of being called. This is mine. This is myself. This is what I am. Altammas are unworthy of attachment. Having heard that altammas are unworthy of attachment, he directly knows every Dhamma. Directly knowing every Dhamma, he comprehends every Dhamma. Comprehending every Dhamma, then whatever he experiences, pleasure, pain, neither pleasure nor pain, those are those feeling terms, those initial, the result of that initial contact, whenever anything arises, pleasure, pain, neither pleasure nor pain, he remains focused on inconstancy. Focused on dispassion, focused on cessation, focused on relinquishing with regard to that feeling. Do not let that feeling stick. Don't fan that fame, fame. Notice it, but don't fan the flame. As he remains focused on inconstancy, focused on dispassion, focused on cessation, focused on relinquishing regard to that feeling, he is sustained by and doesn't cling to same world, dupudana, anything in the world. Unstained, he isn't agitated. Unagitated, he totally unbinds right within. He discerns birth is ended, the holy life fulfilled, task done, there is nothing further for this world. It is in this respect, Mogalana, that a monk, in brief, is released through the ending of craving utterly complete, utterly free from bonds, a follower of the holy, the utterly holy life, utterly consummate, foremost among devas and human beings. You don't have to be a monk to do this stuff. You can break it. This takes practice and so that's the longest I've talked in a long while. So what does what does that bring up for you folks? Questions, comments, reflections? what does that bring up for you folks? Questions, comments, reflections? Thank you for listening so patiently and attentive about it. Pat, did you have something?
Um, not specifically. I was introduced to the fire sermon some years ago while visiting India. And as I, as it was presented to me at the time, that north of Gaia on this hilltop area, which I was drug up there, it could have been any hill, but supposedly this was the hill of where it was more of a Hindu sect which did this fire ritual. And that wasn't so much a thousand. I mean, I know when they say a thousand, ten thousand, they just mean a big number of followers, but there was a large group of fire aesthetics that were doing the Hindu ritual up on the hillside. And that yeah, we're all, we're all, I mean, I was a Girl Scout, so we're all sort of hypnotized by the fireplace or the campfire. But as he was trying to explain our involvement with when we start perceiving and we're sort of wrapped up and we don't realize that things are impermanent. I mean, it's burning, but what does burning mean? It's it's consuming, it's destroying, it's sucks away our energy, converts it into something else, but distracts us at the same time. And that, you know, until we realize that how much of our energy is going out into these things, we can't even begin to realize that, yeah, we're, we're standing there caught up in it. And, and that beginning awareness of self. Somewhere in there is where we start to wake up. You know, and it's kind of as you were, as you were talking, I started diagramming, which is my way of putting the universe in order. That it seemed that there were certain key words that depending on you had under, yeah, I had to catch on the words. So you got a flame, fire burning. You've got disenchanted. You've got dispassionate and then you've got unbinding. It's kind of like the Four Noble Truths and another, another way of describing it. But starting with the burning, burning, burning that, you know, you're so caught up in just lowest level of consciousness that you don't realize you're burning, burning, burning. Anyway, that's my observations.
Yeah, so a couple of thoughts, comments on that. Comment one. Buddha, I mean, there probably, there are many reasons why Buddha didn't write things down, but one of them, most of our great teachers didn't write stuff down because they taught people. They didn't write books and hope people would pick up the books and read it and figure it out themselves. Buddha said, I teach two things. I teach dukkha and I teach the end of dukkha. And he did that to people. So he went to the top of the hill where there are a bunch of fire aesthetics. So he's going to use the language that's familiar to them and this construct that's familiar to them, which is the fire. When he went back to the aesthetics, the five surfeits, he's using language that they can relate to, which is avoiding extremes of self-gratification, which is what they left behind and self-mortification, which is what they were engaged in. Come to the middle. Don't do either of those things. That's where the pieces, so he was talking to people in language they could use. His teaching was incredibly simple. And so, yes, it's the same words, Pat. It's the noble, the, you know, you find the words of the Anapana Satie Sutta in there, the words of the Dhammichakabhitana, the Turning of the Will of Dhamma, the Four Noble Truths are in. Because he's recycling them to fit the context in which he's teaching. It's really powerful stuff. Thank you. Who else? What else? Adam.
A word that we see recurring in several of the sutras is the word disenchanted. And if we were to describe someone as in just like everyday speeches, disenchanted, it would have like a melancholic, like almost nihilistic tone to it. And I, how do we live in a world of like delicious food is delicious food and beautiful things are beautiful things with that becoming like yeah, Eeyore, like disenchanted with the world just sounds kind of awful. Actually, it sounds awful.
And some of these words, it's difficult to get words that really point at what we're using. The word, one, it showed up once again, the foul, and there are other ways of translating the foul. And at this point, so the foul is pointing really, if you look at the body, you know, we think the body is just a beautiful thing, but it's not universally beautiful. There's all sorts of stuff in here that really isn't. And so it's pointing to look at the whole story. That's what it's pointing. Disenchanted, enchantment is a word, we, we use it again, it's a word with valences. So it's really hard to find a word that means just what we want and only what we want. Enchantment is about magic. Enchanted castle. The Sleeping Beauty was enchanted. She slept for a hundred years or a thousand years. I've had a long that, right? Turned into a frog, enchanted. So enchantment is about the delicious food. Oh, that's delicious. And we get sucked into that story and there's a magic that arises that out of which we see that food as something which it's not. We see that food as something which is permanent, has an essence, has a, this is good food that I can hold on to and put in my pocket and take home with me. To be disenchanted is not to lose sight of the food being wonderful food, of it being very tasty, but to see it differently. It's to break down, it's to lose that magic which turns it into something it's not. And by that, seeing the food as dependently arisen and focusing much more on its food that nourishes the body. And this relationship, it changes it completely. And it's actually far, far more beautiful and wonderful. And it arises and it passes. And there's no fire associated, there's no stuff. Does that?
Yeah, I like the, the magic, you're kind of just the enchantment. Yeah, that makes more sense too.
Benjamin?
I would just add, sort of in the same vein, that for a long time I was misled by the idea of what is meant by sensual pleasure. I'm sure that there's something with the language and the inflections again, but when he talks about going, when the Buddha mentions going to a place free of sensual pleasures, he mentions a grove of beautiful nature. And it's like, well, is that not letting my eyes be aflame? We have colorful flowers on the altar up there. So it's a really interesting thing. I just wanted to add that I understand. I feel similar things to what Adam's expressed. And so there's always this interplay. You're never going to land exactly right where it's.
You can't. Okay.
That's, I don't know if words are exactly part of the twofold dependent origination chain, but I'm sure there are some are pretty early on.
Well, they're they are a necessary evil because words are very much, well, the evil part, they are very much part of what we use to fabricate. They're very much how we create the fires in the first, it's how we create the world. Money couldn't exist without words. Democracy couldn't exist without words. Words are how we create the world. This wouldn't be a bell without a word to call it a bell. And, and common agreement and what that simple sound means. So they're part of the problem, but they are also part of the solution because words are precisely the tools that we can use to deconstruct this and see through it. There is a challenge because words are dualistic and ultimately the way to see through it is to see in non-dualistic terms. So there's a challenge in there and we just have to recognize that challenge and hold it gently. But words are really essential to this process. We just have to, as I said, hold them gently. So sensual pleasure. Five aggregates, Buddha used the five aggregates to talk about this or this or this or, you know, the five aggregates, it's just stuff, just saying we're not what we think we are, we're just made of stuff. That's what the five aggregates mean. That's not a problem. There's no dukkha in that. It's just a description to help us see through it. They become a problem when they are the five aggregates of playing. And if you look at it, they need, the words are used in those two ways. They're talked about as five aggregates when it's analytical, don't get stuck. And it's the five aggregates of clinging when updana, fire starts showing up and dukkha starts arising. And same like sensuality, sensual pleasures, it's just what happens with senses. So that's not per se a problem. They become a problem when, and again, they're used in these ways a lot of the time. It's essentially not universal, but the distinction is clearly there. The strings of sensuality is how this is seen translated. The problem is the strings of sensuality, right? All in the same, getting us stuck. The leaves won't float, the petals don't, don't slip off any. Now.
We want to add a little bit about disenchantment. Before the modern age, before the enlightenment period, the whole world was the world of enchantment and it was for religions. And the point of enchantment is that every single part of, of what we call reality is in, is ingrained with sacredness. So it's not a reality per se, but it's the sacred spirit of gods and supernatural beings that it actually represents. And so the engagement of humans with the world was one where they had to discover the sacred element and discard the material, you know, existence of the world. When the enlightenment happened, everything turned upside down and instead of enchanted world, we have disenchanted world where the sacredness is no longer sacred. There is no, you know, gods that imbue the world with meaning and instead the material materiality of the world becomes really central and present. And I think Buddha's discourse is only, is, is also focused on that, you know, understand the world as is, what is real versus what you imagine is sacred and just you imbue it with these delusions about gods, but what's real and the practice of mindfulness really just experience perceive or whatever word you want to use, the, the actual act you're doing, you know, if it's looking at the flowers, you know, this actual act instead of what they might mean. You know, to that. So I think mindfulness actually is the, the opposite of, of enchantment.
Thank you. That's very, very helpful.
I have another observation. I loved the most of what you brought. The passage from the Bahia, I really connected with it. I really like it. It's the when for you there will be only the seen in reference to the seen, only the heard in reference to the heard, only the sensed in reference to the sensed. Only the cognized in reference to the cognized, then there is no you in connection to that, no you there. When there is no you there, you are neither here nor there, and this is the end of dukkha. I really connect with this. It's, it's just so clear. It's you know, like awareness being aware of awareness. You know, just the process of awareness, that's all it is. There is no like observer who is aware of, of an object. It's just the
It's just awareness.
Just awareness happening. Yeah, I really connect with that. I wonder if folks have been able to like experience even brief moments of that particular, you know, the scene. You know, there's nothing but like see the acts of seeing, seeing the scene. I don't know. What was the the sensed in the reference to the sensed. There's also a different way to put, to put that, but if anybody was able to like have this experience, even for brief moments, would you like sharing it? I don't mind hearing about it.
I don't think there really is a way to share it better than the way Buddha just shared it there. Because you can't describe it. It's naked awareness. It's just, Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, I was sort of thinking with this, like when you make the break, you, I mean, okay, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to tell a story. When I was a kid, I loved chocolate. I craved chocolate. I tried to figure out how to buy chocolate. I loved chocolate. And at some point when I became aware that I was dependent on chocolate, to me it was a drug. It should be a controlled substance. But at some point I could stop being driven by my craving for chocolate. And I could say, yeah, the chocolate's delicious. It's absolutely wonderful, one of the great things in life, but I'm not going to eat chocolate as a meal. Okay, it needs to be, I could control my desire for chocolate and get small amounts of it. I'd still appreciate it, but it didn't own me. Okay? And that to me is sort of the, that moment of awareness with detachment that you can still appreciate it, but you can, you're not driven by it. Okay? Anyway, that's my thought.
The the piece I think, if, if, if you read that passage again, I think if it's just the first place when there's when there's something seen there is only the same when something's heard, there's only the, if that's all you read, it wouldn't land in the same way. It's the piece at the end where he says, when this happens, there is no you there. When there's no you there, you are not here, you are not there, nor are you in between. That's the piece that really allows it to land, I think. And so then you say, oh, I kind of that explains what this is about and it kind of things together. So for that, the place where I think you can enter it is the, the practices of spacious awareness. So just that gap between the breaths, start there and let that go because there's nobody there. There's nobody there. It's just space and then it becomes the sky and the sky, everything just passes through the sky. Your thoughts, your feelings, everything passes through the sky. There's nobody there and there's no there, there for you to be there anyway. And then if you, when you, when you're out hiking, when you're playing a musical instrument, there are moments, there are going to be moments in there where something really beautiful is happening. And there's no you there. There's just the naked experience of that happening. And that's a way into what he's talking about. Does that help?
I mean, this is a brilliant description of non-duality.
It is.
Yeah, and yeah, I mean, I, I understand you're, you're pointing to openings from which one could start pulling the string and getting into that experience.
Not pulling the string, letting go.
Letting go of the string, yeah.
Yeah, because it, I mean, I'm, I'm delighted and thrilled that this is pleasing you, is exciting you, is interesting to you. So now it's like, what do you do with that? What you do with that, you don't talk about it. Just get that balance and you recognize where you've touched it. It's like, and the book we're reading was the Eages, which for those who aren't, there is with each and every breath by Tenis Robic. which for those who aren't, there is With Each and Every Breath by Tanisro Bikkhu, which is a book about the problem. It's about many tendencies. It's a guidance on how to handle it. It's wonderful. So, I'm wondering. Absolutely. I like that book. I just come to number one.
He probably said something about that experience as well, so that's important.
Go on. I distracted myself so much. It'll come back. But it's, you can't, it's, I'll come back. Dick. You're on mute.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. For a good part of my life, I made my living by being an editor. And I noticed that when I really became absorbed in a manuscript, in terms of trying to understand it, trying to see where it was confusing, where it could be changed. That absorption became such that there was no you anymore, pretty much. There was no me anymore doing this. There's no sense of time and no idea of how long I'd been engaged in it. And there was a sense of pleasure, real pleasure, that, you know, which is wonderful if you can find a sense of pleasure in the job you're doing. So I think this, this idea of getting absorbed in something where there's no you is, is pretty common, I would guess. The second thing I wanted to bring up was when you announced you were going to talk about the fire sermon. I remember that years ago, I had acquired a book by Tanisro Bikkhu called The Mind Like Fire Unbound. And I finally read it after all these years. And one of the things he says in there is, okay, when the fire is gone out, where does it go? And it doesn't become extinct because it can come back. So where does it go? Well, if it finds sustenance again, it, the fire comes back. And so there's a potency, a potentiality for the fire always to come back. If it finds sustenance. And to me, that is a wonderful image of how, okay, for a while we burn and then we somehow, you know, the fire goes out, somehow we, the fuel goes away. But then, you know, in a little while, we start burning again. And so there's always the potential of burning. And so what you can focus on, or one thing you can focus on is what sustains this fire? What in my life, what in terms of I do or say or think will bring this fire back, will provide sustenance for this fire? And that's where I need to work. And eventually, you know, I'm not there. Hopefully, there is nothing that brings the fire back. There is no sustenance anymore. But this tendency for us to cling, to get attached, you know, is constant. And so you do well for a while, and then, well, you get attached again and you start burning again. And I've got to have that chocolate, as Pat mentioned. Even when you say, ah, this is a temptation to eat chocolate, doesn't mean that, even when you become aware of that, doesn't mean you aren't going to go ahead and eat chocolate. Yes, I had to heck with that, with that warning, as it were. I'm going to eat chocolate. And then you're going to eat a chocolate again the next day, the next day, the next day. So it becomes a kind of attachment. Anyway, that's one of the things I, I thought Tanisro brought out that was very helpful. Thank you.
Susan and Natalie.
I, I too was, I, first of, two things. One, when you're talking about describing the moment of release and total, well, I think of it as no gap, no gap between me and everything else and what is happening. It's like, I was walking in nature long before I knew about Buddhism, but I had learned about non-duality and the cessation of thought and subject-object and all of that. And so I'm just walking and suddenly I was part of nature. I was one with the tree and everything. It was overwhelming. And so it is hard to describe that. You just know that feeling. And, and I just think of that as a moment of there was no gap between me and this self that I've created and everything else. And the second thing I wanted to mention was, I had thought about it with the fire and the symbolism or the metaphor of being on fire and having that. I mean, I've always thought about that, that we're all aflame and yet that the fire is stuck to the fuel. And so I appreciated that metaphor of thinking of it as fuel, we're feeding the flame. It's, it's when we add fuel to that, that we become attached again or have aversion or have all of this that separates us. So I really like that idea of the fire becoming unstuck and released. So just.
Thank you. I'll say one thing on the first point you raised, which is to, and to clarify, clarify teaching here. So experiences of boundless space, boundless consciousness, these are deep and profound spiritual experiences. These senses of unity and oneness with everything, they are, they can be really profound experiences. And these are the kind of spaces that a lot of dukkha, Buddhist first teachers, that's what they were teaching and that's what Buddha said, this is really powerful, really open, but this is not. Because in that experience of universal consciousness, there is still consciousness. There is still something being fabricated. And that's what Buddha realized and he said, I need to, I need to see deeper into this. So experience that Bahia was, after, after this teaching, Bahia woke up. He, he got it. That experience is of no here, no there, no in-between. In the Diamond Sutra, Tathagata is refraining, Tathagata means that's come, that's gone. And in the Diamond Sutra, it's rephrased as, there is nowhere to come from and nowhere to go to. It's not nihilistic, but it's just, there's nowhere to land. There's just these naked seeing, just hearing, without any sense of unity within. It's just these little, it's totally indescribable. Natalie?
Very much in this vein, I was going to say. So in reference to Dick's example, what, what you're describing, Dick, I understand as a description of being in the flow. And what Susan is describing, I understand as being in awe, for example, of nature or something like that. And to my understanding, those two are different from non-duality. In the sense that with, especially with the experiences of being in the flow, the difference is that there, with, with non-duality, there is insight. And with being in the flow, there is no insight. At awe, also being at awe, in awe, I think that there might be a hidden observer there. Even if we don't necessarily recognize it, that, that experiences the unity and the beauty. And I think that non-duality is slightly different than that, that there is just, there is like insight of, like you said, there's just nobody there.
So, Natalie, yes, and the practice, this, it becomes incrementally subtle. And incredibly difficult to see the most subtle levels. But that's what Buddha did when he died. He said, you know, none of you got, this is not getting them because there's still, this, it's a very quiet little fire. You can barely see it, but there is still some burning. There is still some clinging. There's the, there's the, the, in the, the boundless space, boundless consciousness, which is the sixth jar, there's, there's still consciousness. No thingness, and there's nothing. That's which is the next one. There is still an observer. But that's the point you're making, but still an observer. It's only when the observer is completely gone. And, but there is still awareness. A lot of these, and a lot of flow states. There is an analogy there with, what does Tanisro call it? It's something I'm sadly familiar with, which is where you sit and you settle into these really deep states. And then you realize half an hour just went and you have no idea where you were. The place we're talking about here, what Bahia was being taught, there is awareness. There's always awareness. There's awareness that is not bound by time and space. That's what that's all. Dick, you have your hand up soon.
Yeah, I would not say there is no insight in being in the flow. Reflecting back on it, you understand that when there is no sense of I involved, there is this sense of peace, of quiet, of a pleasure even. So I think in, in the sense that you have that experience, things that you can learn from it that, you know, are part of the insights that you need, but don't necessarily take you, you know, farther than that. The other thing I, I wanted to ask about was, when Buddha is describing his release, he says that, you know, as soon as my three round, twelve permutation knowledge and vision, concerning these four noble truths as they have come to be, was truly pure, then I decline to have directly awakened to the right, to the right self awakening unexcelled in its cosmos with its divas. Which and rose in belief, this is the last birth, there is now no further becoming. The vision that arises. That, does that arise concurrently with, with being unbounded? Does that arise afterwards somehow? Because knowledge and vision suggests to me consciousness of some kind. And I don't quite understand what that, that consciousness is.
So you broke up a little bit there, Dick. Your question came, I think, from the line, there arose in me vision, knowledge and vision. Is that right?
And the question is, does that, does that knowledge and vision arise concurrently with being unbounded?
Let me just hear this again.
Afterwards?
Are you essentially asking about if pure consciousness can exist? I think that's what you're, you know, with your questions about.
I think he's asking several things. He's also asking about the temporal aspect of. So the phrase in there, the place in there that I actually get stuck, knowledge and vision arose in me. There isn't actually a me there at that point. That's why I pulled it back out to just have a look at it. So what's happening here, the twelve, the four and the twelve, there are three rounds. There are the duties associated with each of the four noble truths. So we have to understand the truth, we have to end what we.
Practice. We have to practice, yes.
The third one is release and then the fourth one is develop. But we have to do these. And the first is a statement of the truth. The second is the act of the verb is, it's been completed. So those are the twelve. So once we've completed all of these steps, then knowledge arrives. Once we've completed all these steps and release happens, there is no longer a me there. What happens is when there is something seen, there is just the seen. When there's something heard, there's just the heard. This physical form continues as a prisoner of time and space and engages with time and space and responds to time and space. And it has its internal consciousness, but its internal consciousness is not going to get trapped in the same way. Because that internal consciousness is just that which is the seeing, right? You need a subject and an object for seeing to actually happen. So there is little dipoles of consciousness, but they're not what we think of as human consciousness. The knowledge and vision that arose, I think what he's talking about is that which is beyond words, that which we actually can't talk about. What is, it's the fire that's released. It's no longer bound by time and space, no longer bound by this physical form. It's just released. And for that, it will never land again.
But there does seem to be a realization there.
Yeah.
I, I would, the, the way I would describe this is more like the me that is there when I forget myself. When I stop being self-conscious or I'm got distracted ideas. And it's that zen of the moment, but I would describe it as the pure, my pure consciousness, when I am just being in the present moment and I'm not thinking about stuff. So that there is this moment of clarity, a peace of directed thought, you know, like, if I'm giving a lecture, I'm nervous when I go into it. And then once I get into it and I've just got my thoughts coming out and I don't care about the time, I don't care about the room, I don't care about my feet hurting. I am just in that moment. But I, you know, I'm just me at that point. And I'm not thinking about being me. And if I, if I think about some of what you're, you're talking about, it's that moment where you just are, rather than, rather than, you know, getting clouded with stuff in your way. At least that's how I think of it.
There's a discontinuity here, which is where this all becomes very hard to conceptualize, well, it becomes impossible to conceptualize and do properly in language, but we'll have a go here. So this flow thing we're talking about, so first off, the, let's deal with it in the the boundless consciousness, the, you know, I'm walking in the woods and I'm one with the birds, the trees in the forest. And it's deep and powerful and it can be overwhelming. And then on top of that, so Dogen, he presented his teacher with a deep realization he had. And he went, so his teacher, he said shinjin datso, which means dropping off body and mind. He'd settled down and there was just awareness, body and mind were gone. He was no longer entangled with body and mind. And that's this deep, really, really deep place. Which again, you know, Buddha, really deep places with his earlier teachers, it just still had a little bit of attachment. And Dogen's teacher looked at him, and I like to think he chuckled a little bit, and he said to Dogen, datso rak datso rak, dropping off, dropping off. You're still holding on to something, dude. Let go of the dropping off itself. So when you're in that place of walking through the woods and you're one with nature, there can be that second move. Oh my goodness. And there's not even a me or a forest, there's just this, it's just this. Um, these moments of flow, whether it's, um, editing or playing the piano or, um, presenting and delivering a talk, these are very real and they can be very powerful. Um, and in those, we can have these moments where something drops out and there's this penetrating, oh, there's no me here. But it has to come by way of awareness and realization. It's not, you know, if I'm there doing this thing, yes, I'm in flow and it's a glimpse of what we're talking about. But as Natalie said, there's not an awareness, there's not this presence at the same time. So for the flame to be put out, it needs to be completely released and be aware of the complete release. Now.
For me, that, I believe could happen from experiencing contradiction. What I mean by this is, so, you know, like our mind is a compilation of different algorithms and different processes, not just the mind, but the whole nervous system in the body. And so different processes have like different agendas and they have like different, I guess, um, tasks to run, but the, uh, thought that is being born and dies and reborn of there being a self, um, in a way is part of the condition, the rising of the other processes, it's part of the environment that conditions these processes to run in a particular way and act in a particular way to some degree. When there is a contradiction between what these other processes are expecting the self to be or the self to act and, and a reality that shows a very different outcome, then this contradiction is like, if this is a reality, then how can there be a self? This reality points to no self. When this moment of contradiction happens, I expect that, you know, that's the moment in which, like, all the different algorithms experientially by direct experience realize that, oh, this is just a thought. And so there you have more of a unified mind and then your behavior, your thinking, your everything just starts to change. And in moments of awe, this hasn't happened. There's like, you know, awe and experience of being one. But that hasn't happened, you know, the contradiction is not a contradiction yet. That needs to be resolved by, you know, the death of the self, I think.
Yes. Um, the, so a couple of things about the contradiction point. Um, these contradictions happen all the time to us, but most of the time, because we don't, um, have, we don't bring strong self-awareness, I need mindfulness to bear. Most of the time when these contradictions arise, the stronger voice, voice overrides the weak of us. So it's happening all the time. And we reinvent story in order to create consistency. Happens all the time. Dozens of times a day we do this kind of stuff. Um, but if we do this with awareness, if we are present, we can see, as you said, we can actually see this happening and we see these contradictions. Well, then we really do start seeing this process of one trying to overwrite the other and that this is just a bunch of nonsense, really does start revealing itself. And it does start falling apart. The, there's a technology, there's actually built around this, which is a common technology. Coens intentionally build, Coens the distance, Coens are intentionally used to break down the logical mind. They're presented with something and you know it works because you trust the teaching environment, you trust your teacher, teacher gives you this thing, it's gibberish. And you sit with it and this gibberish, you know, a dog, this is the sound of two hands clapping, what's the sound of one hand? Well, you know, he's given this to dozens of people before and they all have these insights, what the hell are they seeing? It makes no sense. So you sit with this and eventually, all these circuits they seize and the pressure sets and then just explode. So it, there, there is a technology that actually takes advantage of that. So yes, but we have to be aware of this is going on, otherwise we just miss that opportunity. And, um, and it is available, so it's this, bringing this back to how is this useful? Um, recognizing the value of these flow moments, the value of these bliss experiences of, uh, you know, um, unified consciousness or whatever it is, these are all really powerful and really valuable and they're pointing us in this direction and recognizing them and learning from them and bringing those into our practice. Watering the right bits and then looking within them, what am I still fabricating? What here is still something that I'm building and I'm creating and I'm holding on to? Working to let go of this. And, um, just constantly noticing this tenacious, ferocious attempt of the mind to hold on to things. To blow and fan every little flame that shows up and turn it into a roaring tornado. So I wanna, as I say, I wanna finish out with some meta-practice and, um, I'd like to get you out of here before noon rather than right at noon, so you've got a little more of the day. Um, does anybody have a last pressing thought, question or comment they'd like to share? One or two, if anybody does, let's do that, otherwise we're going to tell them that.
Reminded of a favorite poem. Uh, if you ever get the chance to read Gary Snyder's Paiute Creek. It is a perfect description of being, letting go and being in the flow and having a clear mind. It's absolutely, uh, this has been my, one of my favorite poems for many decades.
Thank you.
Gary, Paiute Creek. You can just do a search, Paiute Creek, you'll find it if you don't know that poem.